6/20/24, two o'clock PM, meeting to order at 3:04 PM. And with no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 3:04 PM. So we're done with that. Okay, now we'll get going on this other one. We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 6, 2024, to order at 3:04 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, we'll get the business meeting started here and/or the work session started. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item here today? We see no one. Seeing no one is registered to speak, we'll now reach us to the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager. City Manager Ford.
Mayor, and welcome to all those watching. This is the city manager's report.
We have no changes to the agenda today.
But I do have a couple or three, I think, employee recognitions, some great work going on in the organization. First, an introduction for a new team member that started on July 22nd, and that's Roberto Zapata. Roberto, do you mind standing? Yeah. Let's do it. Roberto is joining the City of Waco team as our Director of the Waco McLennan County Library. Roberto is coming up from Houston, where he was Assistant Director for the Houston Public Library System, managed over, I think, 40 facilities for Houston. He's got more than 20 years' experience in library administration and programming, just a wealth of knowledge and talent. He holds a Masters of Public Administration from UTSA, I believe. Is that the Roadrunners? There it is. And he's got previous experience in McAllen as well. He's an instructor for the Texas Library Association, and he has a really robust, one of the reasons we felt like he stood out, he has a really robust set of experience around customer service. And the libraries is just such a great place for people to learn about anything, but also learn about culture, and it really, we think, is going to be a valuable addition to our community. And so thanks for welcoming Roberto with open arms. Also wanted to recognize our IT team, they're back in the back right corner. They did just a really incredible job July 19th. You might have been affected by the crowd strike issue. Well, the city was affected, and this is the team that showed up and made sure we could keep doing all our jobs. The IT team became aware of the crowd strike issue overnight, first, of course, in our public safety departments. You know, the critical elements of public safety were 24/7 all the time, and our IT team jumped right on the issue, working overnight, coordinating fixes. And thanks to preparation and backup processes, we honestly had minimal disruption to city services. And that's thanks to the work of this team that I'll highlight by name in a moment, and also the work of departments. IT. And by midday, we were back fully operational, which is a little better than some of the airlines, I hear. Won't name names, but y'all are aware, that was a global impacting event, and it's one of the things that we train for and prepare for, and this is the team that keeps us going. So I want to say a special thanks to Adam Scruggs, Mark Pop, John Branch, Lori Wade, Kristia Costa, and Stas Vaskebojnovic. No, that was close. Sorry, Stas. But y'all stand up and give a wave, please. Go on a blooper reel at some point. Right, Dory. I also want to recognize the Cameron Park Zoo team, our facilities team, and communications and marketing for all the work that's gone into the last couple of years, leading up to our grand opening and ribbon cutting of the Penguin and Blackfooted Cat exhibit, which is tomorrow. I won't go into all the history of that exhibit. Thursday, thank you, Thursday. Tomorrow, tomorrow. I won't go into the history of the exhibit, it's a long, long history. It started on a napkin sketch, actually, way back when. But as council and the public know, we are really excited to be opening it up officially. We'll be acknowledging a lot of people's work at the ribbon cutting, but today I want to particularly highlight the city staff that I think honestly have delivered this project with excellence. Goldman, Thomas Jormann, and the facilities team, they managed this project. It wasn't necessarily on their bingo card, but they've delivered it so well, and they're so proud of both the Penguins and the medical education facility that's coming in the fall. Want to say a special thanks to Brendan Wiley, Dwayne Hills, and the team at the Cameron Park Zoo, just have really delivered with excellence. And then our comms team along the way has done a really nice job of telling the story and getting the narrative out about how exciting this is. So Monica, Dory Helm, Kyle, Robbie, and the rest of the comms team really appreciate the fun that you've had in teasing the grand opening and the coming of the Penguins. We do have a couple of videos we wanted to play, I think, if I remember right. But why don't we have anybody associated with the zoo? Anybody associated with the zoo project, we all stand and get loved on a little bit. Come on. Roll that for them.
The Penguins, you looked a little hot, didn't it?
We've got one more video on Penguins as well.
Yeah.
Nice job. So if you're following along on our YouTube channel, we've done nine videos in total, preparing for the Penguins to be there, promoting other city services as well, and it's been a real effort. And so I want to say a special thanks to Robbie for being the Penguin. It's been a roll of a lifetime for him. And very proud of him for being willing to do that, especially in July in a Penguin suit, I'm sure that was comfortable. And then I've been alerted that maybe we're having a problem. Audio's good. Okay, audio's good. Thank you. We're about to have to shut down the meeting, but thanks to the team behind the scenes. We do have two public hearings today. The first is in relation to our Community Development Block Grant Funds. Galen Price, our Director of Community Services, will present this public hearing later on. You'll remember, though, on June 18th, you got a preview of this discussion. And the second public hearing is a rezoning ordinance, and Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will provide a briefing on that later in the work session. We have a total of 47 resolutions on the agenda today, so a pretty good group of resolutions. The first one I wanted to highlight is Resolution 533. It is amending a contract with Bureau Veritas for third-party plan review and inspection services for six subdivisions for a total of $1.4 million approximately. This contract is the latest in a series of moves by Clint's team in development services to provide efficient delivery to our customers and really improve our key performance indicators in the building industry. So recent improvements like he's just launched video-based inspections, as well as this contract, are really making a difference to improve the delivery of customer service. With this particular contract, staff identified six subdivision phases that are going to build out over the next few years, about 1,000 home sites that will be inspected by Bureau Veritas, this outside consultant, which allows city staff to remain fully allocated to all of our other projects like graphic packaging and all of our other subdivision work that's going on. I anticipate this will be a great service, not only for our city team, but also for local building community. Wanted to make sure everybody sees, you know, see a number like $1.4 million, it's a lot of money. Want to make sure everybody understands that is being covered by the permit fees collected from the builder. So the builder comes in, pays for their building permit, that money is equivalent to pay this contract. So from a staff standpoint, it's effectively a wash. And that, this contract, we think those 1,000 lots would take five to seven years to get completed. So appreciate Clint and the team for bringing this item forward today.
Can I comment?
You're the mayor, sir.
I had picked this one out to talk about too, because I really admire and commend the way we're thinking about this in development services. Because to me, we're basically outsourcing a function of it, we're keeping all of our people. And because there's just a blip right now, and we're hitting max capacities with existing staff, and we're trying to be responsive to the community, which is ultimately important to city services. So as we get this, instead of like hiring a guy one at a time, we've got this group, Bureau Veritas North America, which will, which has a kind of a program in place, which we've dedicated several properties to, and you have to go back and look at that page on Resolution 533. But in these cases, I think we're more efficient, we're more flexible. We get a maybe a little peek into how other people do it with this group, with the inspection services. And again, I just like, the $1.4 million burns off over time. We're not paying these guys $1.4 million upfront. And as City Manager Ford said, it's going to take five to seven years to do that. But I like, I like, this is a great way of tackling an issue of responsiveness to the community and providing the best possible service. And Clint, I commend you for getting this thing launched.
Well said. We also wanted to highlight Resolutions 539 to 542. These are items associated with the Texas Anti-Gang Center, the TAG, we call it. Here in town, it's the lease for their office space as well as contracts for staffing. If you're not familiar, the TAG Center here in Waco is one of nine entities eligible for state funding from the Governor's Public Safety Office. And the TAG Center serves as a hub for a lot of different law enforcement agencies to come together and focus on violent crime intervention. So we have local representatives there, we have state law enforcement there, and we have federal law enforcement there, all, as well as prosecutor's office, all working together on targeted enforcement and investigative efforts. In a few minutes, our new Assistant Chief Wallace will be speaking in the work session on our violent crime numbers and efforts like the TAG. And so he'll discuss this perhaps in a little more detail. But the TAG initiatives and the resolutions on the agenda tonight, they're quite important to what the police department's doing to reduce violence in our community. And I just want to say a sincere thanks to the state of Texas and the Governor's Office for continuing to fund this initiative in Waco. When good work's done, we ought to say thanks. Appreciate them.
This is one I had picked out too, are these four or five here? Texas Anti-Gang Center, we refer to TAG, that's the Texas Anti-Gang Center, which is, as City Manager Ford pointed out, it's state-funded, is part of it federal-funded too, or is it mostly state?
I think it's 100% state.
Okay, yeah, not funded here in Waco, but we get a considerable amount of money here with, from TAG. And it's a joint effort, and if you read the materials, I couldn't say this any better than what it's written down, it's a joint effort of the Waco Police Department, the US Marshal Service, the US Attorney's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, McLennan County Sheriff's Department, and the local District Attorney's Office to reduce gang activity in the area. And what I like about the write-up here, we have some stats, very tangible. Since September 1st, 2023, TAG, or Texas Anti-Gang Center, has made 31 felony gang arrests, 23 misdemeanor arrests, and they've successfully had 10 convictions and seized 104 weapons. So this is a program that I'm so happy it's here in Waco, and we're seeing, again, tangible results as time passes, good key performance indicators. So excited to see that in our 2024, 2025 horizon here.
The last resolution I'll highlight is 563, which is easy to skip over. You might just think, oh, that's another professional services agreement, but there's some context I wanted to provide to it. This is an agreement with Walker Partners for Engineering Services for the Airport Road Waste Water Project. This is to design a new sewer improvement along Airport Road between Steinbeck Bend and Lake Shore Drive. This is an area town that has been reliant upon septic systems, which, as we know, are not ideal for particularly being near waterways, but they're also, it's hard to grow with septic systems. So we're bringing sewer into this area, and that will involve a new 500 gallon a minute lift station, a 12-inch gravity wastewater line, and an eight-inch force line that all connect back to our existing sewer system. The reason I wanted to highlight it is this increased capacity here will allow for properties in the area to more fully develop. And one that we're pretty excited about seeing that happen on is at Fuzzy Friends, which is a local rescue partner in the animal world. This sewer project will allow for Ms. Robinson, Mr. Robinson, to expand that facility, and as we know, she takes hundreds of animals out of our shelter every year. So this is a way that sewer and utilities can be a partner in the animal department and tie everything we do together. So just wanted to say thanks for that. Additionally, this project will help Waco Housing Authority, who has a workforce housing project, to add more apartments across the street. So we're also getting some benefit to our housing shortage. There are--
I had a couple more.
You had--
Well, let's hear what they are. The resolutions. And just a few seconds on each one, the first one is 548, that software, it's only 50 grand, but it's a software that'll help us with pavement condition index. And the biggest expense we have every year is trying to figure out how to attack the street's improvement program. It's 25, 30, 35 million dollars a year that our taxes are going towards. And our first goal is that we just want the pavement condition index throughout the city to get better each year. But as we go through it, we're trying to get more strategic about arterials versus neighborhood streets versus major avenues. So I think this tool will help us as we continue to get the streets and sidewalks in Waco up to standards that we can all live with, and it's very expensive, but this software will help us in that end. So I'm looking forward to using that. The other, the other resolution I just wanted to hit on was 553, number 30. 553, where we, again, I point this out, this is an attaboy deal, where instead of buying three new solid waste trucks for whatever they cost now, six, seven, 800,000 each, we're spending about 75,000 on two trucks to get them kind of fixed up. We're rehabilitating two at a much lower cost. We could have just, as he said, you know, we don't want them anymore, but, and then spend a million five, but instead we're spending 150,000. So I just wanted to point out that we are watching taxpayer dollars as we look to optimize our rolling stock. But those are the only two I had.
We appreciate you for highlighting that one. There are three ordinances on the agenda. The only one I'll spend any time on is Ordinance 571. It's a first reading. It amends a developer participation agreement with Mercer McMillan to decrease the cost and city share of oversizing improvements. And the council may recall, back in February 2023, you authorized a participation agreement up to $2.5 million to see a new industrial park be built along I-35. We are recommending to you a reduction in that amount today to just under $1.8 million, and that's because construction costs came in lower than originally estimated, and we've had an earlier-than-expected completion on the Upper Flat Creek Wastewater Improvement Project, which allowed us to remove a temporary lift station faster than we anticipated. So good news on that one, lower budget and getting done early. Excited about that. And then Ordinance 572 is our standard ordinance that you see each year, establishing the administrative departments of the city as required by the charter. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions of Bradley's summary of the business session?
Now, just a big shout out to the IT team getting us through the crowd strike. I guess if we had had the very first version of Microsoft Office like Southwest Airlines, we would have been all right, but appreciate all the good work and the extra hours and keeping us safe and secure. And a hearty welcome to our library director. As a librarian spouse, it's always good to see a new librarian stepping out and taking a leadership role here in Waco. So welcome, and we're looking forward to what you have in store for Waco.
The only thing I'll add to that, Councilmember Boardrude, is in the welcome to Roberto is, y'all know I spent about 14 years in Houston before I came back home, and I still use Houston Public Library. They have a really expansive, a more expansive than we do, electronic book base. And so, you know, but Houston is one of those cities where anybody in the state can get a library card. And I think that now that you are here, we have a lot more innovative things to look forward to that can make our library system even greater than it already is. So welcome to Waco.
Councilman, you'll appreciate, Roberto's quite excited to get your thoughts and others' thoughts around the steam center as well.
Sweet.
Mayor, that's all I've got for you.
Well, I appreciate also the, all of the city employees showing up, and we appreciate you specifically as we talk about these things, as the city manager covers from meeting to meeting, but we appreciate you all year round. You're making the city, you're making the city of Waco the best it can be, and I appreciate it.
One point of privilege before they slip out of here, because you know the staff has a tendency to get ghosts.
They got to get to work, right?
I know, they got work to do. I was at getting some coffee yesterday, and I saw the cover of the Wacoan magazine, and they were talking about, I mean, it's the Penguins, right? And I mean, it's those things. Yes, on our own channel, we have the benefit of telling our story, but the fact that it's, you know, really, really building excitement in the city. And I was talking to this set of humans, and I was like, y'all have to go. And they were like, oh, we're so excited. And, you know, we can't do any of those things, we can't share our narrative, we can write our narrative, we spent grueling efforts in creating our narrative of who we are and what we are, but if we don't have, get that message out, then it just stays with us. So, you know, thank y'all again for what you do, not just comms team, but everybody who put into that effort of telling that story. So know that you're appreciated, and happy belated birthday, Michelle.
All right. Thanks, thanks, City Manager Ford. That completes the review of the business session, and we will now go to the consent agenda on the resolutions. It includes Resolutions 2024-524 through 2024-570. 2024-531 is being pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items the council would like to move from the consent agenda?
You said 531?
Yeah, 534. They're being done, we'll just, 531, I'm sorry, 531. So 531 is being pulled, and the next agenda on the work session item is work sessions 2024-514 through 2024-518. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
To this, this first one is Work Session 514, and it is a discussion of the Animal Shelter Facility Consultant Review. I'm inviting Assistant City Manager Ryan Holt, as well as Kristen Rose from RDBR to the table. And I'll let Ryan speak to most of the intro, but, and I imagine he'll cover this in his intro, so it might be duplicative, but this item, it's interesting timing, right? We're in the middle of conversations about how to operate the shelter and that sort of thing, but the City of Waco, as an open intake shelter, you know, has a duty to plan for the future. And RDBR's been a great help in that, Ryan's been a great help in that, for sure, and the council has been a great help in that because you've authorized funding multiple times over the last year to buy properties in and around the shelter location. And that's going to give us, as you'll see throughout the presentation, lots of options on how to deliver animal care in this community. So I want to say a special thanks to you as well. Ryan?
Mayor and council, pleased to be here today, talk about, and I'll introduce the folks from RDBR here in just a moment. I want to talk a little bit about how we got here. You know, the landscape around animals in the community and animal services has been in flux since, really since COVID. We've seen that across the country. And then in the fall of 2022, a lot like some other clinics and shelters around the country, we had an outbreak of distemper, which is an upper respiratory infection of dogs in the shelter. And what we discovered was that the shelter, as it's built currently, doesn't allow adequate space to quarantine for an airborne upper respiratory disease. And so our vet, in consultation with vets out of the University of Florida, internationally recognized experts, determined that part of the, what'll be talked about later, the RDY kennel building, would have to become a quarantine facility. Well, what that does is it reduces the number of kennels you then have to manage the animal population with. And so we started talking about a facility master plan after that. We've also seen since COVID that the number of vets available to do spays and neuters out in the community has been significantly reduced. And so that burden has been placed on the veterinarians that you employ at the shelter facility. And again, determined that the facility, as it was built, never anticipated doing the volume of spays and neuters that needed to be done, and so that was another topic. The ability to serve foster dogs, right now, I just remember, we came in, we have over 622 animals in foster-- animals in foster care, in addition to the couple of hundred we have on site. So right now, you have about eight-hundred dogs in your custody that we're responsible for providing medical care for. And that clinic that's at the, at the facility currently is, is just too small for that kind of volume. So we looked out to see who we could partner with, and we identified RBDR. They have an extensive history at the shelter facility. They were part of the renovations early on. They're very well respected in the area. And we asked them to look at modern design around those points of need to provide a, a master plan for the whole facility, but to concentrate also on that medical facility. We engaged RBDR in November of this past year, and they have spent the intermediate time talking to as many stakeholders inside and outside, inside the city and outside the city, and partners, animal partners, and in, in animal welfare groups, veterinarians, and their own contract veterinarian, to come up with the report that's before you today. So at this point in time, I'll turn the, the mic over to Kristen Rose with RBDR. Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Ryan. Hello, my name is Kristen. I am an architect and interior designer with RBDR Architects. For this master plan, we also hired a consultant, Dr. Ronald Epps, who I'm sure most of you are familiar with his name. He's been associated with the Waco Animal Shelter Facilities for many, many years, and we hope to continue using his services as we, as we move forward. Just a kind of a quick overview for a master plan. We always look at a, at a master plan as kind of a roadmap. Specifically for the Waco Animal Shelter, we were asked to kind of optimize efficiency across buildings and kind of throughout the sites to meet the needs that we identified in all of those interviews. As a quick background, this is just kind of, we, we created a little historical timeline for the site. You can see kind of dashed in red, those are some of the original kennel buildings that were on site that were built in the nineteen-fifties. And in twenty-fourteen, there was a study done that showed there were a hundred-and-seventeen dog runs on site with approximately sixteen-thousand-three-hundred square feet of buildings. Later that year, we were hired to do a schematic master plan for the facility's expansion. I actually worked on that personally, so I have a long history myself with just working on this site. So it's been a really fun process to have that continuity. From the time that we started that study to twenty-sixteen, the shelter, the live exit rate went from thirty-three percent to over ninety percent, and has maintained that no-kill status ever since, which speaks really highly to the people who are running the facility. At the end of twenty-sixteen, after all the renovations and the new buildings were built, the overall building square footage on site increased to nineteen-thousand-two-hundred, with a total of a hundred-and-eighty-nine dog kennels. Over the last few years, the city has added additional property adjacent to the existing, and added a covered pavilion over the dog play areas in the middle of the RDY kennel building. The next few slides, I apologize in advance, I'm going to go quickly. I know all of you have had access to the full master plan book that goes into much greater detail on all of the process, but I wanted to kind of just run through what we looked at to give a, a brief kind of background before going into the recommendations, which is really where I want to spend the majority of my time. So generally, the location of the site is located between Circle Road and LaSalle Avenue, just off of the circle. This is the existing site plan, including all of the additional property that has been purchased. We looked at access, so how do you get into the facility off of Circle Road and Twenty-third Street? We looked at parking, so you have twenty-four parking spots in the front parking lot, twenty in the back, and adjacent gravel parking lots in both the front and the back that are used very frequently. Accessible parking in the front. We looked at different multiple points of entry, secured and unsecured, how that potentially creates confusing pathways, and possibility for biocontamination, and of course, security concerns. Different recreational areas on site. So we looked at, you know, where they're located, what the pathways are to and from them, different sizes, and how they're used and by which groups. Of course, having a secured perimeter is extremely important in a facility such as an animal shelter. So we looked at what types of fencing, where the gates were located, and how all of those connected. We looked at site lighting and how that related to site security. We looked at existing utilities. This was a lot of conversations back and forth with the city, with Walker Partners, with Encore. We have some fun electrical problems that we're going to need to address and solve, not to, not to mention water. That straight line does not indicate that the floodplain ends there. This is also not a FEMA floodplain. This is a city of Waco flood hazard area. That's just where this study stopped. So, in all likelihood, that will extend over the majority of the rest of the site. So we have had and will continue to have multiple conversations with Walker Partners on how that affects our detention areas and what we're going to do to mitigate. We also looked at every single building on the site. First, I'm going to talk about the administration cat building. This is the oldest building on site, built in nineteen-fifties and sixties. It's just under twenty-six thousand, twenty-six-hundred square feet. These diagrams, we're going to go through each building, and the colors will represent different types of occupancies that are in each room, and the numbers on these plans indicate the square footage. And this will show up on a really super exciting chart, not an Excel chart that we'll go through later. I will, for the sake of everyone's sanity, not go through that line item by line item. But here you can see animal control is in that dark pink area. The center is used as a break room slash conference room. It's kind of in the middle of everything. There are offices scattered all throughout both of these buildings, and you can see the cat area there, and the, kind of the, the light blue on the bottom right. The adoption center was built in twenty-sixteen. It's just over thirty-six-hundred square feet. This is the main public entry to campus. So everyone from the public that comes into the shelter enters through these front doors. There are a lot of things that happen in this building. There are a lot of different types of office spaces. There's a boardroom, just a lot of things kind of happening in this one area. The RDY kennel building was built also in twenty-sixteen. It's just over seven-thousand square feet of conditioned space. To note, the puppy room is located in that top right-hand corner, in that kind of dark tan area. And the kennels that are immediately underneath it, in the lighter green color, those are currently being used for the isolation kennels that Ryan was, referred to earlier. So the normal traffic flow now goes all the way to the other side of the kennel building, runs through all of those kennels, and then ends up at the puppy room. That creates biosecurity issues for the puppies. Building D was built in two thousand, just under six-thousand square feet. The Sallyport addition was also done in twenty-sixteen, and the clinic was renovated in that top left-hand corner, also in twenty-sixteen was the clinic was added. The red square up there, that's the actual surgical suite. You can see it's fairly small, but there are two surgical tables that are currently in that suite. And then the teal area around it is the clinic area. And as Ryan said, it is very, it's just condensed. The yellow bottom large rectangle, those are the quarantine kennels. Those are also used as kind of overflow kennels. They are meant to be used as a run. There's a guillotine door in between them where the dogs can go back and forth, but for lack of space, they are currently individually being used as kennels right now. And the dogs in bike quarantine are having to be taken out of those kennels in order to receive the care and the, and the cleaning of the kennels. Is that the chart that I was referencing? I'm happy to take any questions about this. This goes through every single room in every facility on site. It looks at what is there now, what is the capacity of what is there now, how that compares to what they recommended, and where those are located. So you can kind of see what's there, what should be there, and then where it will be located in the recommendations. So now going into recommendations, this is the existing site plan again. And then this is what that would look like built out at the end of the master plan. So the new clinic building is in the bottom right-hand corner, immediately adjacent to Building D, again, to optimize workflow efficiency for animal services, animal control, and clinic staff. There's a new loop that connects back through to Twenty-third Street, using that new piece of property that's been acquired with expanded parking, effectively going from twenty parking spaces in the back to fifty-two. Forty of those spaces are in a secured city lot, and the other twelve would be kind of public or vendor for foster to come in and access the new clinic. So again, having multiple kind of points of security where you can always have a secure perimeter. We're showing kind of an animal park-like enrichment area, new pavilion. We've got dedicated quarantine runs, dedicated isolation runs, increasing the biosecurity, having very identifiable public entrances, and increasing parking in the front as well. I would love for all of that to happen overnight, and it be there all at one time. We went ahead and kind of broke all of these different construction typologies into different phases, and have labeled them by color. They are not in any order of priority, other than the first one being the new, the new clinic. Looking at red phase, the only demo that's associated with the first phase is just site work. So again, as I said, that new clinic building has direct and secure access to animal control and animal services. There's that new loop connection to Twenty-third. This building is now completely screened from public view, other than the public lobbies that would be accessed from that public vendor parking, those twelve spots in the back. We are addressing water detention that has been sized with advice from Walker Partners. We hope that that will be large enough. If not, we have additional things we can do. And then there's some extended fencing on the top right there that would be an eight-foot private fence, private fencing, again, to create a secure perimeter, even if the enrichment dog park doesn't happen right away, that property still becomes usable. Looking a little more closely at the building, those isolation runs, so again, this is for respiratory illnesses, are shown in the green on the top left-hand side. There are two points of entry there, very intentionally, so that animal services could access those runs and provide animal care without ever having to go into the clinic area. And clinic staff can go and access those animals without having to go into another building. Again, always looking at how do we increase and optimize workflow efficiencies. The surgical suites are larger. There are two rooms shown side by side in the red on the bottom right-hand corner. Those would have two tables each, so four tables total. Again, with the clinic area in the middle, so optimizing workflow efficiencies. There's a dedicated break room area, so clinic staff can eat lunch without having to walk across the site into a different building. Two veterinarian offices and those two public lobbies that would face that, that other parking area. There are other isolation for puppies, so again, having a separate dedicated room for Pravo or gastrointestinal issues, cat isolation, restrooms and laundry facilities centrally located to be immediately accessed from the isolation kennel area and from the clinic area. So again, trying to decrease any opportunity for contamination. In addition, moving our isolation runs now makes the RDY kennel, those sixteen runs, available to be rededicated to gen pop. So that increases the number of kennels available for animals. It also decreases our biosecurity concerns, because now you can have direct flow of traffic coming from the adoption center through to puppies, and then going through the general population of the dogs. So that protects the puppies and creates a better traffic flow. The five days, this is really focused on site improvements and animal enrichment. So I've got two blowups here, just so that we can talk about them a little bit easier. The dog park area, we're, we're showing that enclosed with a eight-foot-high privacy fence with smaller fencing kind of play yard areas in the interior of that space. It would be accessed right over by the adoption center, so you don't have any cross-traffic going through the kind of back-of-house type areas and buildings on the site. There'd be a dog walking path. We're trying to optimize the existing canopy tree cover, plant some new trees, have some new covered shade structure, pavilions added in there. And then on the other side of the site, we would very specifically go and, and address the acoustic and sightline issues at the existing dog yard areas in between the RDY building to make those more usable and pet-friendly. Very specifically programmed that courtyard in the middle of the admin cat building, and then looking at that dog run area between the adoption center and the administration cat building. Moving the existing donor pavers to the very front does multiple things. It highlights your donors. It calls attention to your entrance, and it makes the central area available as a puppy dedicated play space. So that protects the puppies, and it puts them on display at your entrance and through the large glass wall that's immediately adjacent into the adoption center. So that's a retail opportunity that I think that is important to, to, to take advantage of. The purple phase addresses the renovations for Building D. You can see the demo is, is fairly limited. There's basically three walls that go down. The, what used to be the animal clinic and surgical area is now the animal control office suite with a private supervisor office. The animal services supervisor now has a private office in an expanded intake area, so that person's directly in with the people they're supervising. The quarantine is now dedicated quarantine runs, so those animals are now using those runs as intended, and they're never having to leave those runs or being taken out of them to have care. The Sallyport area, all of the holding air, kennels that have been kind of temporarily placed in there and kind of throughout the facility, there's now a dedicated holding area for those animals in those kennels. So if someone's coming and looking for an animal, wanted to check and see if their, you know, pet is in there, they don't have to go in the secure perimeter of Building D to go see those animals. They can just go through the Sallyport and go directly into that space without ever having to break that secure perimeter. That also opens up the Sallyport to be, you know, free for the large trucks to come in and, and drop off animals as intended. In the center area, where there's that dark teal space, centralized washing area, again, if an animal comes in and needs a bath, there's a dog bathing area, and there's washer and dryer for linens, optimizing workflow efficiency. The blue phase deals with the renovation of the administration and cat building. There's not a lot of construction associated with this phase, just kind of reallocating spaces. There's now a dedicated meet and greet room for the cats. The cat bike quarantine room has been moved to an exterior wall where you've got direct exterior access, and a larger kind of more private break room conference area for city staff and employees. The yellow phase, this is a little hard to see, is the large pavilion that's adjacent to the adoption center. So be, you know, we've sized it just over twenty-six-hundred square feet. You know, that can, I can adjust. I think the location is what's important. So the proximity to the adoption center where you can utilize the facilities that are in the adoption center. The adjacency to the dog park, so you can have large fundraising events and have people spread out in that entire dog park area. The adjacency to the front public parking, where people could immediately come into that pavilion in that dog park area without ever entering into the main grounds of the, of the shelter. I think that's a really great opportunity for fundraising. It's a great opportunity for different classes that could be held there, really to just provide animal enrichment. And then the last phase looks at expanding the front parking, moving that curb cut down, taking advantage of that additional property. Those parking spots now number fifty-eight on this plan. And then looking at, there are some issues with confusion on which front door the public are supposed to enter at the front. So with some minimal landscaping and reworking in the sidewalks, you know, just trying to refocus that energy on the adoption center as the main public entrance. And that's, that's it. Thank you so much, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments, guys?
I've got a brief comment. I'm, I'm excited about this design, and I think it demonstrates the city's investment in our care for our animals and our community. I think just that intro slide showing the live exit rate from twenty-twelve and the turnaround to twenty-sixteen and since then, the last eight years, is a testament to the city's investment in animal services and in care and animal welfare in our community, but also in the strong partnership we've had with the Humane Society, and that we hope to continue on in this new phase of our relationship. But I do think that this is a, a great project and a good expansion of this site, and it seems like it flows very nicely, and it'll fit our, our purposes very well. So excited about that. that.
I'll echo you a little bit there, Councilmember Borderoute. I think it's good that we're taking a fresh look here at what we have and we've bought, we've purchased some adjacent property and trying to figure out the best way to use it and to utilize that space and how it fits in with what we have. And really, to me, three things. We're looking at capacities and we seem to be running it at capacity or above capacity. We're looking at efficiencies, kind of how the workflow works, what's customer-facing, what's backroom, and you've been very thoughtful about how that would look or should look. And then just the improvements that we need to the overall system in the, as their kennel give a medical attention, as distemper, as you mentioned, Assistant City Manager Holt, spay and neuter services, the medical services that they could have while they're in the kennel. So very thoughtful. To me, this whole deal is about animal control, you know, responsible pet ownership. We have to pick them up, they're going to the kennel, we try to do the best we can while they're there with medical attention and spay and neuter in certain instances. And then placement. It's a zero sum, we didn't get 100% of them placed, but you know, we're not fortunate enough to have that happen every time, which is where we reach out to keep partners like the Humane Society and Fuzzy Friends. So we're, this whole ecosystem of animal control here, and I appreciate everybody working together for a good solution. And this is a, this is a nice first step on looking at what, how, what this could look like, so I appreciate the presentation.
I actually did think of a question, I'm sorry that I'm not giving you the last word here, Mayor. With the new clinic building, I know that it's been difficult to hire full-time veterinarians. And if you already answered this, tell me to go back and watch the recording, I know I got here late. Do we have a, do we foresee a need to hire more veterinarians? If so, do we have a plan for doing so as we expand the clinic and animal care services we offer?
It's a great question, Councilman. We had a second veterinarian, full-time veterinarian start first of July, so now we have two full-time vets. We will not stop having contract veterinarians come in and give us additional assistance. We've had that program for a number of years before the landscape sort of changed and we'll continue to engage outside veterinarians. That's why you'll see two, two full suites with two tables each, so we'll engage those outside vets and vet techs, because you can't do the surgeries unless you have the vet techs in support. And so part of the new clinic building will give adequate space, but also space for prep and recovery. So just like humans, the animals need place to recover from anesthesia that was, when I first saw the drawings, I said, "A beach area." What is a beach area? And they explained that it's, it's the location for the animals to recover from anesthesia in a heated floor situation, so they'll get, they'll get the best of care while they're staying in our spa.
So maybe calling the general population, this is more of a spa than incarceration, is what I like, that's the way I like to think of it.
We certainly want to, for the animals to feel like that.
Thank you, guys.
Will you all be prioritizing the phases and is that the next step, or?
Yes, sir. There's an item on your agenda for tonight, Resolution 2024-528, to engage RBDR for the design of the new clinic space, and then we'll evaluate that. Once we, once we get those designs back, we'll evaluate that in the context of CIP expenditures and identify what the priorities with both the staff and the experts in the field as to what, what we should do in order.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got that in the CIP currently for four and a half or five million dollars.
Yes, sir, just, just right at five million dollars in the, in the CIP of the coming fiscal year.
In the coming fiscal year's capital improvement program, it, at least initially has been prioritized. Of course, that's ultimately a council decision later in the fall, if you want to have that in there, but, but that, in the staff's working document, it's prioritized.
Yes, sir. We really see that as one of the keys to the success of animal welfare in Waco and the surrounding community. As y'all know, we're an open intake shelter for 11 or 12 cities in addition to Waco, so we are the regional shelter, and all of those, all of those shelters have come together, you know, in the past and said spay and neuter is, is what we need. And so this clinic, this, this strategic plan really is sort of the linchpin to continue forward in the atmosphere that we're in post-COVID, where you have so many more animals and not as many people wanting to adopt, and so foster, we talked about the foster numbers, the foster numbers are up, and we're responsible medically for those animals while they're in foster care. So this is the linchpin, we think, talking to all the experts around the country, that spay and neuter has to be part of that solution.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kristen, thanks to Assistant City Manager Holt, appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Manager Ford, will you introduce the next speaker?
Well, we're going to call the next two work sessions together. It's Work Session 515 and 516. It's a discussion of the property tax certified appraisal role and certified taxable values, as well as information on the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and the tax collection rate, as well as the discussion of the city manager's recommended fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget. I've got Blue coming up, or he's already up there, Blue Costlick, our new Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Manager, he'll be flying solo up there today to present the update on the budget and the property tax rate in particular. As an update, we have received our certified roles from McLennan County Appraisal, or Central, McLennan Central Appraisal District. And fortunately, or perhaps unfortunately, Blue and the staff were right on target for those preliminary estimates, which means there's not a whole lot of new money coming into the budget. We were right on top of it, so I'll let Blue get into the details on that and appreciate your update.
All right, thank you. Mayor, Council, good to be with you, and I may be solo at the table, but I've got a great team behind me that have really helped out with this. They've really pulled this wagon along in this year of transition with the, with the staff, so grateful for them, grateful for all the work that they've done with that. If we're going to want to jump right in, Mayor, Council, I'm going to go over just a little bit of an overview, kind of a recap of what we talked about about a month ago as far as what we're facing in this budget cycle. I will give an update of where we are on the budget itself. We've added some of the special revenues and some of the debt service, some of the funds that weren't in that original one, we've added those in, they're still preliminary, but we wanted to give you a kind of a better sense of where we are today. So we will talk about the tax rate after that and then go into some discussion. But as a recap, some of the practical challenges that we've had in this year as far as the limited budgeted team that we've had, they've done a great job, but what we really want to focus on is a lot of the headwinds that are happening in the economy and here in the city of Waco, and we talked about, a lot about that with the inflationary pressures mixed with the flattening of our sales tax, the property tax, like City Manager Ford was just mentioning, those valuations coming in, they're starting to slow down from what we've seen over the last few years. So all of that combined really has us focusing on what we need to do with our budget to really be able to provide the same, or if not greater, level of service to our residents, to our businesses. You know, we owe that to, to our folks out here and what they, what they should expect from us and what they deserve. So what we have to do on our end, look at, you know, really our operational efficiencies, making sure that we are looking at all of our expenses and controlling what we can, looking at vacant unfilled positions, freezing those, removing some of those, some of those things that we can do internally, those strings that we can pull, we need to start doing that within our own budget to make sure that we, we are providing what we can with the dollars that we receive. So a little bit about the balanced budget approach, the general fund expenses, what we've been able to do, and general fund is really what you think of as the core city services that we provide, your streets, your fire, your police, more the development side. Those, those all come and kind of culminate into what we call the general fund. That general fund, we'll say, has not changed from what you saw last time, so still 202.5 million dollars, both on the revenues and the expense side. That was reduced over the current fiscal year that we're in by 1.2 million dollars. So good work by all of our city staff to be able to pull out some of those efficiencies. Now, I'm going to say too, if you exclude all the personnel, the cost of living adjustments, things of those, those natures, we reduced the, the operating budget in the general fund by actually 7.6 million dollars. So good, good work there to find those operational efficiencies, find those savings so that we can move forward with the budget that we've got. We are going to be delaying some of the decision packages, some of those enhanced services or expanded services, some of the capital projects. We need to get a sense of the economy and how that's going to play out over the next few months, so hoping to have something back to you mid-next fiscal year in order to move forward with some more projects. But we do have a lot going, we're not stopping, we're going to continue to work through the projects that we have that are, that are already in the queue. Still funding some long-term commitments, you can see a list there, the police and fire contracts, 7.2% increase there, that's 3.3 million dollars. The city side with that COLA, like I said, is a 3% COLA. That, that's a 2.7 million dollar impact to our budget. So all of that building in, we are still able to reduce what you're going to see in the budget. So the, the main key there is at the, the bottom of that slide, no reduction to core city services are going to be required by this budget, so we will, we will be able to get out there and work for the people.
All right, Mayor, Council.
So if you look, this is going to be a little bit different, you look at that very bottom line, your revenues on the left-hand side of your screen, your expenses on the right. What you saw last time, the total funding, total expenses was really right, right around the 500 million dollar mark. We've added some of those, like I said, some of those special revenues, the debt service back in. That brings your budget right now up on the revenue side to 139.7 million and the expenses at 627.2 million. So still doing, doing great on that. The general fund, 202.5, both on the revenues and expenses, and that's where you can see the, the 1.2 million dollar drop that I was referencing earlier. I do want to mention that this, again, I'm going to call it out, the budgets are still under review, they're not finalized at this point, so we still have some work to do in the economic development side, some of the capital improvement programs and some of the special revenue funds. So what we hope to have after this is a, is a good discussion with you so that we can move forward and solidify these budgets so that the next time that we're in front of you, we have the actual finalized budget. Moving into the general fund, specifically 202.5 million dollars, revenues and expenses, you can see that broken out on the expense side here on the left, that's your total, the 1.2, broken out by departments. None, none of this has really changed since what we showed you last time, so I'm going to breeze through this, but excluding personnel, that's where you see the 7.6 million dollar reduction on that right side. So some key budgetary factors on this, let's, let's go into the property tax as a whole, the tax rate, we have recommended to keep at the 75 and a half cents per hundred-dollar valuation, which again is, is one of the lowest in the 16-plus years that we can look back. This, this tax rate that we have captures the full value of that new, new growth and development, allows that to come into the general fund for general service purposes to, to provide those services back to the, to the, to the ratepayers. This, this tax rate really does just flip almost a penny between the maintenance and operations side and the interest in sinking, which is your, your debt service payment, the debt payment that's due every year. This maintenance and operations rate, if you remember from the legislature, they always talk about the three and a half percent that you're allowed to increase. If you want to put that in a relative basis, this tax rate that we're proposing takes advantage of 0.19% of that allowable three and a half percent increase. So on the, moving on to the sales tax, we will talk more about property taxes in a little bit when we talk about the evaluations, but moving on to the sales tax, our collections for fiscal year '24 were budgeted at about 55.1 million, looking like we're going to end the year probably about 56.3 million, so good performance in that. Our fiscal year '25, again, with what we're seeing in the economy and the slowdown in, in sales tax collections, budgeting conservatively at 56.5 million dollars, that's still a 2.5% increase to the budget, but relatively flat to what we expect to collect this year. So getting a sense of where we are on collections with sales tax year-to-date, the, the May '24 collections came in, they lagged 2023, same month, but it was really very much in line, about $10,000 off of what we, what we anticipated in the budget. So not much change there, exactly where we thought we would come in, and fiscal, fiscal year-to-date, still about a million to the good, so still good collections, strong collections, and we, we expect to finish out in a strong position. Very busy chart here, the, the light blue bars are going to show you your total collections for that month, you can see how they ebb and flow by the different month. That dark blue is where we start to really look and analyze what, what is happening within our economy. That's the, that's the CPI, the inflation-adjusted dollars, so what we're doing in this, in every single month, we are leveling that dollar. So $1 back in August of 2019 is the same as $1 in what we're looking at is June of 20, or July of 2024. What we see in that is you can, you can start to see the, the pattern that we're talking about of how flat that is becoming, so the raw dollars that people are out there spending are not really increasing year-over-year, month-over-month. What we are seeing is the increase in collections is really due to the inflationary effect of the dollar. So that's something that we have to be aware of. If inflation starts coming down, you know, there, there's a decision point by the consumer, are they going to go out and spend, or at this point, are they going to replenish some of the reserves, some of their savings, some of, start paying down some of the revolving debt that has been built up in our economy? So that's why we are taking a little bit more of a conservative approach. We don't, we just don't know how the consumer's going to react to what's coming up, and based upon the economy right now, it's looking like there, there is a Fed rate cut that could be in the, in the works for September. So either, some have talked about 25 base points, some have talked about half, so 50 base points, we, we just don't know what that's going to be at this point. All right, so rate changes, fee changes that, that are going to affect the, the city as a whole, again, like I said, you have, you should have a list of all the fee changes in front of you that, that are in this budget. I'm going to call out a few because these are the, the more citywide generic ones that are going to affect our residents more, more so than, than individual users. So first on the water, we are changing, recommending changes to the volume metric or the usage rates, and you can see the new rates fiscal year '25, $3.34 for the lowest usage, zero to 3,000, $4.17 for 3,000 to 8,000, that's not changing, but 8,000, 15,000, 25,000 are all increasing. Really, when you, when you get a structure like this, you're, you're looking to encourage conservation in your water usage, so the higher usage is going to, to actually pay more in their, their utility bill on the water side. On the wastewater rates, base rate is going up $1.34 to $26.17 per month, the volume metric rate at $6.76 per thousand, that's an increase of 35 cents per thousand. And solid waste collection fees are going to increase to $20.52 with your approval, that's a $1.41 per month increase for fiscal year '25. And the one that we will continue to talk about is the street, street maintenance fee. The revised methodology that we adopted in this year's budget, after, after going back through, is a $2 per month for a single family residential unit. This new methodology really took back a lot of what the, the initial output was from, from that street maintenance fee study. The residential side, about 80% lower than what was proposed in fiscal year '24. The non-residential, so your commercial, your industrials, those are 45 to 99% lower than what was originally presented in, in the fiscal year '24 plan. We have a lot of information out there, there's a link to that, there's a phone number that you can call or an email address that, that you can, that our residents can, can reach out to if they need to know what they're looking at for, for this street maintenance fee. All of know what they're looking at for this street maintenance fee. All of that information can be provided. And this is the works of our great Paul Kane, Assistant City Manager Paul Kane. So, he did the legwork on this one. Looking at the total utility bill for our public, just the average person out there, in twenty twenty-one, the average payment on a monthly basis was a hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents. In fiscal year twenty-five, the proposed average with that two dollars increase for the street maintenance fee would be a hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Now, behind this, what we're looking at is, if you adjust for inflation, that twenty-twenty-one bill to twenty-twenty-five today, that would be a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. So, we are still below what people on an inflation-adjusted basis were paying in twenty twenty-one. So, that just goes back into what I was talking about earlier. We are trying to manage this and balance the cost of our services with what we provide. Mayor Council, going to go into property tax valuations, where the certified rolls came in, and a little bit about our tax rate itself. So, the twenty twenty-four total certified values of the entire city of Waco came in at about sixteen point three billion dollars. You can see the breakout of that is mostly in single-family residences at seven billion. Single-family residences have grown significantly over the last five years, nine point three percent per year, so increasing from four point eight to seven billion over that last five years. So, significant growth in the single-family residential. Your multifamily has not changed as much, actually took a dip in fiscal year twenty-five, from that one point eight billion the year prior, down to one point seven. Your commercial real and personal combined stayed flat, whereas your industrial real and personal combined increased by a hundred million. And then, there's a lot of other categories that just we kind of lumped together. Those really stayed relatively flat year-over-year. So, that's kind of the breakdown of your city, where you are on the certified values. So, what does this mean with the proposed tax rate of seventy-five and a half cents with those certified values, the property tax calculations that we have to go through according to the comptroller? This budget will raise more revenue, total revenue for this city than the prior year. So, in state terms, this is, even though the rate is the same, this is considered a tax increase. The tax rate twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-four tax year rates, you can see those listed at seventy-two point six four three three cents for the no-new revenue voter approval tax rate, which is that three and a half percent on maintenance and operations, goes up to seventy-seven point nine cents. We do have unused increment. That's kind of the savings from the last few years, the last three years, where we didn't go up to that full three and a half percent. That's what's left over that we could use if necessary. That's two point three cents, which brings our total voter approval tax rate with the unused increments to eighty point one cents, almost eighty point two cents. Again, seventy-five point five cents is what this budget is built upon, and that is what we are proposing to go forward with today. And we talked a little bit about the revenue that comes in. This tax rate with the certified rolls and the evaluations brings in approximately five million dollars more to the city than over the prior year. How does that break out? You know, a lot of misconception is that all of that five million is available for the general fund to use for streets, or for police, or for fire, or whatever. That's not exactly the way that this breaks out. So, what we try to do here is break that out for the public to show how that five million dollars revenue actually comes to the city. And about two point seven of that five actually comes to the general fund for maintenance and operations. The other two point three million goes to pay the additional debt service from debt that we issued in years prior, based upon the schedules for the next year. So, two point three seven of that five immediately goes away to pay debt service. There is no other option on that. That has to be done. So, when we talk about the general fund, maintenance operations, where does that money come from? From the existing property, meaning the properties that paid in tax year twenty-three and are going to pay in property tax year twenty-four. Four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of that total increase comes from existing properties, whereas the new properties that are added to the rolls, the new properties that got included to the rolls this year, two point three million dollars are being provided to the general fund for operations. On the debt service side, the existing property picking up the years prior at one point seven million dollars, as opposed to the new properties paying five hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, just a little breakout of how the revenue works when it comes in from property taxes, in case you get asked. So, this tax rate and the increase in the average taxable value of a home here in Waco, how does that affect our residences? In fiscal year twenty-four, the average taxable value of a home is two hundred and six thousand dollars. In fiscal year twenty-five, that has gone up by nine point five percent to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. So, on that average home, in fiscal year twenty-four, the city of Waco taxes on that home would have been one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents. The previous year, that was a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-two cent increase, and the appraisal impact of that was a hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. We did have a half-cent tax rate reduction, which offset ten dollars and thirty cents. But overall, the average home went up a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Now, with the same tax rate year-over-year in fiscal year twenty-five that we're proposing, with the increase of nine and a half percent on that home, the total tax bill from the city of Waco will be one thousand seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-seven cents. So, it is an increase of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents on that average home. Now, a lot of times, we get asked, what if we go to the no-new revenue rate? What does that do? And because of the way that the appraisals work and the no-new revenue, your average home would still pay about eighty-five to ninety dollars. So, instead of this hundred and forty-eight dollars, there would still be about eighty, eighty-five dollars to that average home. All right, Mayor Council, I'm gonna shift over to the budget calendar, let you know a little bit about where we need to go from here, and then we'll get into a little bit of discussion on what we heard today. So, August sixth today, here in this work session, in the business section, this first reading of the ordinance setting the departments, and then the resolution setting the date for the public hearing for the budget. So, that's on your agenda today. That public hearing for the budget is gonna be on August twenty-seventh. So, we got two weeks to get this all solidified. August thirteenth, budget and audit meeting. We hope to have all the final directions, so that we can get something in front of budget and audit, in order to provide everyone at least a full week to review what we need in order to move on to our next meeting. So, August twentieth will be another work session, talking about the budget discussion. In that business meeting, you can see the action items there. August twenty-seventh will be a special called city council meeting, public hearing, and the ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-five budget and capital program. Then, we'll come back on August twenty-third, or I'm sorry, August, September third, for the public hearing on the tax rate and then the adoption of that tax rate ordinance. So, very busy month. We'll get to spend a lot of time together. All right, on the budget discussion and guidance, Mayor Council, this is where we're gonna turn it over to you. If you have any guidance for us, a little bit about the key decisions that we've talked about today, maintaining the tax rate at seventy-five and a half cents. One thing that we didn't mention directly in this, but the outside agency funding, that's planned. What we have planned right now is just maintaining the three and a half million dollars year-over-year. The requests from those outside agencies came in much higher, somewhere around the four point five, four point six million dollars. That's just not something that we think is feasible at this point, especially when we've asked all of our departments to reduce their expenses. So, wanted to get your feedback on that. Something that's not funded, that we can look at if revenues are coming in, the development of a neighborhood street program. I know City Manager Ford has discussed this with several of us, developing something along these lines to take care of our neighborhood streets. And then, really, the fee increases of seven dollars and thirty-eight cents on average per month, Mayor Council. With that, I'm gonna pause here, and I'll turn it over to you if you have any guidance or discussions.
Any comments, Council?
I do have a quick question, and it may be for you, Blue, or it could be for Bradley. In the information, the outside agency funding, I know it's gonna, you've indicated that it would stay flat from last year. And I know that we look and evaluate our outside agencies with metrics and delivery. Were there any recommendations to cut, you know, anything? I mean, if we're making active choices, and I say this because, you know, yes, we've asked, we, being you, have asked all of the department heads to decrease budgets, but these outside agencies aren't city of Waco. And so, you know, with the understanding that universally, we're all tightening belts, you know, in the original asks. And I mean, you know, everybody's functioning how they function. You know, we have several that increase their request. And we've got new ones always. We've got some that are very longstanding. And I mean, I think that in order for us to be the stewards that we are expected to be, we're gonna have to look at things differently, because we can't do the same thing over and over and expect any different. So, I don't know how deep a dive we've gone into this. Now, with our full understanding that we have role and responsibility to do some things and to aid and assist. But I think that we really need to look at this a little bit deeper.
Any other comments?
Well... I don't know how to say this, Bradley. The development of neighborhood street program, you know, that's real important to all of us up here. I don't know that you know that, Blue, but... Since we're already on this budget, but maybe on twenty twenty-five, you could find a way to cut somebody and put my street program in there. Just saying.
No, I mean, it's not, you're not wrong. I mean, it is what it is.
You know, something has to be done. Our citizens expect us to do something about our neighborhood street programs. I know every one of us up here has probably been, you know, and I know it's not on our budget this year. But just to give you an insight for next year, what can we do to do this? What do we need to do to do this? I know our fee increases are asking people for more money, and folks don't mind paying as long as they know there's something being done in their neighborhood, on their street, you know, whatever. But that's just my opinion. I would like for you to look at that for next year and really come to us and say, hey, this is what you're gonna have to do to get this. So, what do you wanna do? Come to us with that, and I can certainly tell you what I will do. I'm sure everybody up here probably will too, and what we're willing to do. So, that's just my opinion, and it's my remarks. But I know y'all have a hard time trying to put everything together for us, and we haven't cut any services to our citizens, which is of importance to all of us up here. But we also know that we're increasing and asking people for more money. So, we need to go back to them and say, but look, this is what we're gonna try and help you do next year. We didn't accomplish it this year, but we're gonna try and do something for next year. Does that make sense to you, what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, it does. And we can definitely work on that. We will get some plans together. I know this is something that, you know, the city manager, everybody has wanted to get started. We can work on that. I will be working on the budget side to see how we can manage something, this program.
Okay, thank you. That's what I have to say.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you know, we were strategic about what we put on this slide, because I've heard from several of you individually on the neighborhood street program. And certainly, in the last couple of years, we've prioritized street dollars going on to arterial roadways that carry more traffic. And the history has been, we'll get to the residential street program later. What is, as you've challenged me, what does later mean? Does later mean tomorrow? Does later mean in 2050? And so, the challenge that you and your colleagues have issued is come up with a solution, come up with some concepts and bring them to the council. And so, I know Blue and the rest of the CMO will do that. A couple of things I might suggest, at least at this point, one is, is that our capital improvement program, I think we're in the thirty million to thirty-five million dollar range for the upcoming year. We've not said that's gonna be on X, Y, or Z street. So, we still have conversations to be had about, do we wanna continue on the pathway we've been on, which has been to work on arterials? Or do we wanna shift into a new strategy where we might do some neighborhood streets in there too? So, we do need to have that conversation. And then, as the street fee changes over time in future years, we had intended for a lot of those resources to go into street capacity projects on the edge of town, high-growth areas, right? Those five or six streets that we've been talking about for a while. That's also a resource that can be talked about, you know, it might be dividing the baby to some degree, but sending some of those resources back into D one, two, and four, districts one, two, and four, that are particularly challenged by a whole lot of residential streets that haven't been touched in a generation. And so, they need full replacement. So, I think those are two levers that we need to have some real good dialogue on in the next couple of months to say, how do we answer Alice's question here? Because it's not just yours. There's others around the dais that are concerned about it too. So, appreciate the comments and question there, and we hear you.
And I'm willing to listen, and I'm willing to cut. I'm willing to do what we need to do for our residents, and whatever is best for the city and our street program. So, I will listen and listen to your options and whatever you bring to us. And, you know, if I don't like it, I'll say, I don't like this, so come up with something better. But, you know, anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you, Bradley. Thank you for those options as well. And I don't mind looking at them, guys, so. I'm looking at Darius, because I know he's got streets.
Lot of streets, lot of old streets.
Yes, a lot of old streets. You can't even drive down with a cup of coffee in your hand, because it'll be on the floor of your car, but...
That's very funny you say that. Every time I get coffee, they ask about room for cream, and I always say yes, and I don't put cream in it, but it's just to give it, I call it street room, so it doesn't bounce out of the cup.
I do wanna make sure that the viewers and the listeners out there understand, we're not cutting street program to nothing.
No, no.
We have thirty-nine, I think we have thirty-nine million. I wanted to jest this new, these new numbers, which I have not had a chance to do. But I'm looking at the slide that shows transfers out of our general fund of being thirty-nine million, and last year's actual was only thirty million. So, most of that's gonna go to, I've not seen the breakdown of that either, but I think in the last iteration, it was twenty-ish million.
It's around twenty million that's still in the street.
Twenty million is going to streets. So, we have an opportunity to allocate that a little differently. You know, we're not hard and fast, where they all have to go to arterials. We can look at, which is part of that software program we were talking about in the resolutions, that we can get a different balance of... in, in the resolutions, that we can get a different balance of not all arterials, but some neighborhood streets out of that 20 million. That's just in the operating flow, not to mention what city manager Ford was talking about, CIP leverage. So I think we've got some room to, however you want to define Neighborhood Street Program, I know that we were defining it as a very focused effort that was going to be funded in a separate kind of a matter, a manner, but I still think we can address Neighborhood Streets within the 30 million that we were allocating year to year. So I still feel pretty good about it.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought you were going to say something negative. I was getting ready. I was getting ready.
Because, because in the, in the meetings that we have had, the public meetings we have had, we have kind of priorities, maybe a shift towards getting those neighborhoods, particularly in some of the, some of the parts of the city that really need it. And it's expensive, like I said earlier.
Yeah.
It's, it's super expensive. I think we, we looked at, just today, I think we saw, if we could have everything we wanted, it would cost like $6 billion.
About $6 billion.
You know, if we fixed every street in town and got every bit of infrastructure that we wanted. So we have to kind of piece it in, so we want to be realistic about it. But we are still, biggest part of our budget outside of salaries and benefits, which is normal, normal, is that street program. And I don't, I don't want to, if we could get 40 million out of a sum, that would be great, but I don't want to put that extra pressure on the taxpayers either. So we've got roughly, it's going to be 20 or 30 million here that we've got to allocate, and just trying to be as strategic as we can on how, how that, that money each year is allocated, I think is important. I think, Blue, this is a great presentation. I like it. Your first, your first time in the box here. You're doing great. You started out with the three major factors, that property tax growth isn't quite what we've seen in past years, we've got to be careful about it. The sales tax growth also is a little bit less than, still growing.
Still growing.
But not at the rate that it, that it, that it has. And we're battling inflation. So kind of the three major factors, and none of us, none of them really moving in our direction here, but I think we're, we're prepared over the last several years that most of us here have been on council, we've built a really strong balance sheet, particularly in cash balances and cash reserves, not only the assigned ones from projects that we've, we've launched, but also the unassigned balances and just free cash. Almost in every one of the five major funds plus the general fund, we have excess cash balances. We have a strong roster of capital improvement projects that are, that are all funded from past years, that we're kind of on deck with large cash balances waiting to, to launch. So a lot of those are streets programs. In the last couple of years, and I've mentioned this before, just our focus on processes and systems, we've invested a lot over the last couple of years in, in software, in systems, and we saw a couple of those in the, in the resolutions today too. So I like the focus on efficiencies as well. So I think, as you mentioned several times, Blue, we will continue to deliver best-in-class services. You know, we will continue to have a roughly 25 million-plus streets program, maybe allocated in a little bit different fashion. We're very focused on expense controls, as you said, we have, salaries and bennies are kind of in market, but we did a big, we got the ax out on, on cutting expenses this year, which I commend staff for that. And then if you look at the analysis on the utility bills, particularly year over year, when compared to inflation, we're still below what an inflation-adjusted utility, aggregate utility bill would look like, thanks to Paul's graph there. But, so I think this is great. Give me some time to digest it. I wish we could lower the tax rate. I get it, we're trying to, we're trying to juggle a lot of balls here and make it all work, but great job on the second iteration here, and good job, Blue, and thanks, Bradley. Anybody else have any other questions?
One quick question, Blue, and thank you very much for a very straightforward presentation, making something that's not very simple, somewhat understandable. The $2 per month street fee, that's the residential, and then there's also a schedule for the commercial and industrial.
There is, yes.
Has that been changed from the Budget Committee meeting that we did in early July?
I don't believe it has changed.
Okay, the same thing.
We have not gone through anything on that.
Okay.
That would be the same.
I think, anybody else have any questions for Blue?
Yeah, for, for those watching that are interested, you can go out to the website and run your commercial properties, run it through a estimator, we'll call it, and, and see what the charge would be for your drive-through restaurant or office building. And I think, you know, as we've discussed in committee and other, other places as well, it's considerably less than the last iteration last year, particularly for commercial properties. But thanks for the council comments, and we'll, the next time we'll be in front of you on this, as Blue mentioned, is next council meeting. As you have ideas or strategies, it is the season, so please be reaching out to me.
With that, it's so quick. I mean, is there, in the form of work session, are we, you know, what are we doing?
Well, we're, if there's significant topics that need full council deliberation.
Got it.
We should certainly add them to the work session. So I mean, I think, but I think we're kind of getting narrower in our focus as we work our way through August.
Thank you. I don't know if I said thank you, Blue, but thank you, before I jumped on you about the Neighborhood Street.
Is that the last slide, Blue?
This is, just a little bit of a recap. Like I said, the challenges, the strategy, the focus have not changed for us. We're still committed, even though we're facing some headwinds, to deliver best-in-class services. We're going to do that in every manner possible. So you have a few highlights to take away from here, and we thank you for your comments. We're going to take those back, and we will, we will start working on refining this in order to get to a, to a solid, solidified budget by the next time we're here, here together.
Well, I, I think the news could be a lot worse. We're about to hear about homicides in the next agenda item, so I think this is pretty, I still feel pretty good.
I'm doing great here.
I don't know if that's going to depress us more or not, Josh.
All right, thank you, Blue.
I was going to say, I was like, if there's not a closing slide, we're going to have to go back and do it again.
I've been told that there has to be.
I was like, we are multi-generational up here, you got to give us something to close.
More reflective image.
You know, I like it.
So that's Work Sessions 515 and 516, right, City Manager? We will move on to Work Session 517. City Manager Ford?
Sure. We'll do a quick update here on Work Session 517, a discussion of, it's a mid-year update on homicides and aggravated assaults, and I'm pleased to be welcoming Assistant Chief Jared Wallace to the table in his new role. So it's the first time in front of council since he's been promoted. Y'all maybe formerly knew him as Commander Wallace. He's now Assistant Chief Wallace, following Frank Ginch's retirement earlier this summer. He'll present the update today. You know, by and large, you know, violent crime as a whole, he'll show you, is down year-to-date, but it's not lost on us, the police department, nor the manager's office, that every one of these instances represents a victim, and a victim's family, and people that are impacted in, in some ways for many years after the event. And so we'll, we'll celebrate where we can, but we're also recognizing that these are traumatic events. So I look forward to Jared's presentation, and thanks for your work on this.
Thank you, City Manager Ford. And, oh, welcome, Mayor and City Council. It's a unique presentation today. Today, we're going to talk about crime data, but we're going to focus specifically on violent crime and crimes involving deadly weapons. I'll also be talking about Waco PD's efforts to investigate these crimes and continue to reduce the number of incidents in our city. So I'll start out by, by just presenting, there's going to be a series of four tables that I, that we'll present, that, that talks about crime, and each one of these tables really focuses on the first six months of this year and other years by comparison. So as we look at it, it's, it's January through June 2024. When we take a look at what's going on in 2024 this year, we see that violent crime is actually down, along with overall crime. It's down, violent crime is down 4%, and overall, we're down 3% through the first half of the year. If we, if we take a look at the performance indicators, which is something that we use to try to identify our crime trends and then determine our operational response, comparing from June of 2023 to June of 2024, we're actually down 11% for the month of June. So, so currently, our numbers are trending down, and I think it's important to focus on that. In fact, it's, it's also unique because 2023 was, showed some of the lowest crime trends that we've had in Waco in a very, very long time. And so although we do have some numbers that are up this year, overall, those numbers are continuing to trend down much more than we've, we've ever seen. So let me take a little bit of time to introduce this slide. So in this slide, what you see is the combination of aggravated assaults and murders by year. The, the beginning year is 2019, all the way to current year, for the first six months of each year. And the last bar is a five-year average of 2019 to 2023. Now, we have combined murder and aggravated assaults on this slide, because we really feel like combining these two slides presents a clearer picture of the amount of interpersonal violence that occurs in the community. If you only use homicide and try to, try to evaluate homicide numbers by itself, it really doesn't give you a good picture, because that homicides could be influenced by the location of a wound or the access of timely medical care. So when you accumulate the number of aggravated assaults and murders or homicides, you get a better clear, a more clear picture of the violent crime that's occurring in a community. This slide identifies aggravated assaults and murders that occurred for, for the first six months of each of these years. And as we take a look at it, we have had nine homicides in 2024, but we've only had 128 aggravated assaults. And, relatively, that's on track with the first six months of 2019, and it's much lower than any of the other COVID years and, and years in between. So the, the last bar chart on the very end is actually the five-year average, and you can see that prior to 2024, at this point, we're averaging about seven and a half homicides a year, and currently, we sit at nine. But, but when we start looking at the aggravated assaults, we see the clear, the clear picture here. In 2024, we only had 128 aggravated assaults. That's 40 less than what we had in 2023, and over 50, roughly 45 to 50 less than what we've had on average for the last five years. With this next chart, we're going to talk specifically about homicide. This chart looks at the homicides committed between January 1st of this year and June 24th. The chart provides more granulated information regarding the unfortunate deaths by identifying the date, location, disposition type, offense type, and motive for each homicide. Of the nine homicides that we've had, eight were identified as murders, and one was identified as a manslaughter that was caused by a reckless discharge of a firearm. Three of the investigations have led to the arrest already of the suspects involved in the homicide, and the other investigations are still open. Our special crimes detectives are actively working these remaining six cases and expect to have closure on many of them before the end of the year. Of the homicides that we've been able to identify the motives for so far, three started out as disturbances. One was a reckless discharge of a firearm, one was gang-related, and one was an act of self-defense. The motives for the other three homicides, we are unclear for right now.
The act of self-defense, is that a category of motive, or is that like, kind of the ruling of the police department in the investigation? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. So, so currently, that case is being sent to the district attorney's office for review.
It's a claim of self-defense.
It involves a, a claim and an investigation that appears that, to, to support the claim of self-defense.
Okay, thanks. May I ask two quick questions? What, first is, what all is, what all falls under disturbance?
So that could be, disturbance could be a breach of peace between two neighbors, between two individuals at the same location. In this circumstance, we are not categorizing a domestic disturbance, a, a family violence or a relationship-based disturbance. This would be two individuals that do not have a relationship at all, involved in some type of altercation between the two, and then that, that leads to an actual homicide.
Got it. And are these, the motives, are those just descriptions you all use for the purpose of categorizing them, or are those, like, statistics, are those, are statistics kept on these motives?
So, so these are, we use the motives to try to, to drill down to the purpose of, of what caused this incident, so that we can help to identify operational tactics to, to try to reduce these types of crimes.
Got it, thanks.
Chief, I know that we kind of make anonymous the addresses to some degree, so it didn't actually occur at 200 Mary Avenue, but we do have an address up there that's listed twice, so I want to make sure that that wasn't a typo. There's two at the 600 block of Ruby Avenue. What, what is that?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So that's unfortunately not a typo. There, this environment is a bit challenging for the police department. There are two nightclubs in this block, and there really are no other capable guardians in the area at that, at the time of the operations. So what we see is a lot of activity in this whole block, not just these two nightclubs, and that's the location of two homicides so far this year.
I'm very sorry to be asking a question so late in this, but what is the, the usual turnaround time from, you know, the, the time that it is declared a homicide to when you can close out the investigation? And are we, would you say, generally on track for that with, with the open investigations we have this year?
It's a good question. So the TV will, would, would want you to know that the first 48 hours of homicide are essential to the investigation of a homicide, right? We see that all the time. However, you know, in today's day and age, there are so many different components that are involved in clearing a homicide. Access to witnesses that are willing to talk to the police, forensic evidence of, forensic analysis of evidence, whether that is, you know, blood type on the ground, bullet casings, all the way up to phone and, and computer evidence, there's car evidence, there's so many different factors beyond the traditional blood, fiber, hair-type investigations that most people understand forensics to be. So because of that, a lot of the, the analysis of this forensic evidence can be very slow and time-consuming, because in addition to the capable skills that we have for our, of our crime scene and, and computer analysis and phone analysis people, we, we also have to utilize other labs to, to process this type of evidence. We have to collect search warrants and obtain, obtain more information before we could actually go into the analysis. So there's a lot of different steps that could create a delay. So it really determines on what we're able to find at the time of the investigation. However, that's not, that, that first 48 hours doesn't consistently determine whether or not a homicide can be cleared and suspects can be identified. That's the misnomer in the statement. So what are we doing about our violent crime? We'll start talking about that at this point. So as we begin the conversation of what we're doing to address violent crimes, I'd be remiss to state, if I didn't state, that there are reasons beyond the control of the police that sometimes lead to homicidal violence. Evidence has shown that factors such as high-risk lifestyles, access to weapons, and timely access to emergency care, plain access to emergency care play an important role in the community's homicide rate. Despite these factors, Waco PD continues to take a holistic approach to addressing violent crime and reducing victimization in our community. Waco PD's strategic response takes a comprehensive approach to combating gang violence, domestic violence, and gun-related crimes impacting the safety of our city. This approach involves each command of the Waco Police Department. It also involves other public safety and public service agencies, community partners, social service agencies, as well in the apprehension, prevention, intervention, and crime reduction efforts that we take. Our strategic response is developed based on our core mission at the police department and our commitment to relational policing. Which is focused on building trust. And transparency, respect, engagement, building emotional capital in our community, accountability as well. And through those measures, we hope to gain trust. That's so key because developing trust in our community helps us identify the witnesses, the who, what, why, and when on these crimes. There is absolutely no way we can solve these crimes solely with forensics. We have to have the trust of our community to be able to identify the resources, identify the leads, and identify who done it. So looking at our crime reduction and apprehension efforts. In the first six months of 2024, Waco PD recovered, seized, or secured 279 guns. And again, these numbers are all based off of the first six months of each year. This is very similar to the number of guns that we removed from the streets in 2023, but it's less, it's about 14% less than what were removed in 2022. However, if you look at the graph, you'll see that this is significantly higher than the number of guns we were able to remove from the streets in the three previous years. These results are due to the proactive efforts of the Waco Police Department Combined Street Crimes and Career Criminal Apprehension and Supervision Team, also known as CCAS, our gang intelligence officers, our narcotics officers, our K-9 and patrol officers working the streets every night. To be able to recover this many firearms, our officers primarily focus on areas regularly associated with gun-related or gang-related violence identified through data, complaints, and confidential sources to apprehend fugitives, conduct surveillance, enforce traffic violations, recover weapons, and recover contraband, and ultimately prevent retaliatory conduct as well. So I also need to mention that it is so important, it's such a key piece of what we do, having our Texas Anti-Gang Unit resources, our fellow partners in law enforcement, in the federal and state attorney's office, to help us with these efforts as well. It really is a team effort. Next, I'd like to talk about our crime prevention and intervention. And this is something that's unique. Y'all will have heard of some of these things, but not quite all of them. So at Waco PD, we really focus on promoting crime prevention techniques designed to encourage responsible gun ownership and reduce gun availability to offenders. You might see that on our social media sites, we use our social media to push out crime prevention information quite regularly. We also use our engagement opportunities in our communications personally with the public to promote crime prevention. I'll give a couple of examples about that later, but I'll say our neighborhood engagement team, for instance. So in the first six months of this year, we spent time and attended 48 neighborhood association meetings. With each neighborhood association meeting that we attend, we are constantly delivering up-to-date crime prevention information specifically for that community. And in addition to what we do with our neighborhood associations, our net officers also have attended 126 events in the first six months of 2024. So we have a very robust crime prevention effort, and we believe that that's part of the reason why in 2024, we had the lowest number of guns reported stolen in Waco in the first six months. We only had 75 guns reported this year. If you look back a couple of years ago, over a string of years, that's less than half of what we consistently had the first six months of each year. So that's a pretty impressive feat. The next part that I'll talk about, and that's actually the upper right-hand corner of the slide that you see here. So this is the new program that we started in 2024 at the beginning of this year. Waco PD began using a lethality assessment matrix for domestic violence. This is an evidence-based process designed to reduce the number of reoccurring domestic violence and intimate partner crimes by identifying high-risk situations that evidence has shown lead to an increase in the severity of violence towards the victim. That severity of violence includes homicide. The way we perform this operation, our patrol officers complete a lethality assessment questionnaire with their victims of domestic violence on every domestic violence call for police service. When the questionnaire identifies a complainant as high-risk for becoming a victim of homicide, our victim services unit is called to the scene, and they provide the victim with resources and a safe way to leave the relationship. Our family violence detectives then also obtain emergency protective orders to protect the victim, and we also share that information with our district attorney's office to support effective prosecution of the offender. While there have not been any significant changes in the number of domestic violence calls for service so far this year, what we have seen is Waco PD is on pace for a 24% increase in the number of arrests for family violence offenses and a 13% decrease in the number of repeat offenders for family violence assault. And again, that really focuses on intervention of domestic violence to try to avoid the situation where the violence becomes so, so bad that it leads to homicide. The next portion of our plan that I'd like to talk about is our community outreach and collaboration. For the past three years, Neighborhood Engagement Team and Community Outreach Officers have held numerous events designed to create engagement opportunities with youth in our community. And some of these activities are specifically designed to intervene and divert youth from gang violence, gang activity, and high-risk lifestyles. In May, many of y'all are aware, our Neighborhood Engagement Team held our community opportunity event. This was the third such event that we've held. This event focuses on providing marginalized youth with resources to positively impact social determinants of crime by partnering with our community resources to provide mentorship, job opportunities, to address food shortages, and also health and housing issues. Also during the month of June, Waco PD held three Safer Together Crime Prevention Initiatives. And this is a new initiative that we started in 2024. We held them across the city. And in these presentations, we provided information to the public to focus on increasing domestic violence awareness, home security, vehicle safety, and behavioral health awareness. Also during all of these events, there was a significant focus on including our Waco PD, UNIDOS officers, and professional civilians who are here to provide services, engage, and engage with our community members that are Spanish-speaking only. This is an extremely important initiative that we started in the Waco Police Department in 2023. It connects with our community members who only speak Spanish with the goal of building trust and improving their willingness to come forward to the police to report suspicious criminal activity without fear of harm. In June, the Outreach Unit also hosted our Junior Police Academy, and we hosted 29 kids from across the city. They got to spend two weeks with police officers, learning about the police department, what it's like to be a police officer, but also focusing on team-building skills and leadership. These are our future leaders in our community, and we enjoy spending that time with them. We've also restarted our Police Athletic League, or PAL, and that's something that's really taken track in 2024. In this, in our PAL program, we connect with our local youth through sports and activities to really build mentorship and just try to break down the barriers between young people and police officers in our community. Finally, we've also partnered with other Central Texas organizations to collaborate on effective enforcement, crime reduction, prevention, and intervention methods designed to reduce violent crime and gang involvement through our McLinnon County Gang Coalition. I'm proud to say that I'm a co-chair of this coalition and that other members of Waco PD are part of this coalition as well. This group focuses on collaboration to address gang involvement and violent crime in our youth community. Partners in the Gang Coalition include the McLinnon County District Attorney's Office, Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network, McLinnon County Juvenile Justice, Texas Department of Criminal Justice, Juvenile Law, Waco YSD, and also local faith-based organizations, all meeting on a quarterly basis focusing on sharing information to reduce violent crime and gang involvement in our county.
Before you move off of community involvement from the police department, I know that this report is technically only January through June, but I'd be remiss to not call out the fourth annual Back to School Bash that just took place a couple of weeks ago, which you can look at and not exactly see right away the connection between that and crime prevention, but you guys partnering with the community and nonprofits and people around town to provide the basic necessities for students to attend and stay in school certainly goes a long way, not only in deepening your relationship, but long-term in hopefully preventing people from seeking alternative ways of furthering their life than staying in school. So again, I know that this report stops in June, so it doesn't make sense for you to call out something that happened just a couple of weeks ago, but wanted to say my appreciation for those efforts.
Thank you so much, Councilman Newing. And we've had other great things that have developed from the COO since June as well. Y'all might have seen a couple of weeks ago, one of our local businesses awarded two $4,000 scholarships for young adults that are interested in, and this stems from the COO, interested in furthering a career in job services that this local organization provides here in our community. So with that, I'm going to start wrapping it up. Whether it's through the enforcement activity of our patrol officers, our detectives, our street crimes, and CCAS or TAG investigators, or the investigation and intervention efforts through our lethality assessment process to reduce homicide from domestic violence, or the prevention and outreach of our net units, Outreach Unit, PAL, and UNIDOS officers, we're all working together towards the big picture of reducing crime and increasing the community's safety and quality of life. Waco PD is intent on building and maintaining effective community and police professional relationships, as well as developing evidence-based and data-driven responses that will impact crime in our community. While the number of homicides in the first six months of 2024 has increased, overall, crime is down, and violent crime is also on this downward trend. It continues a pattern of crime reduction in Waco that's currently at historic lows for our city. We're certainly not comfortable with the number of homicides that have occurred, but we also recognize the challenges beyond the scope of the police department that impact our rate of homicides. Police can only control so much and need the community to be part of the solution. And that's why we do so much intervention, prevention, and outreach efforts here in Waco. In the words of our department's dynamic leader, Chief Cheryl Victorian, "Public safety in our community is not solely the responsibility of the police, but also dependent upon the community engagement and cooperation. We are better together. We are Waco." With that, I'll open for more questions.
Any questions or comments?
I have a few. Thank you so much, Assistant Chief Wallace. Good to have you here, and congratulations on your upgrade. When we look at the overall crime stats, we, you know, I appreciate the fact that PD has been diligent about serving our community in a way that our violence numbers are actually down. But as City Manager Ford mentioned, you know, one is one, and there are still victims and families that are attached to that one. So one of the things that I appreciate is the re-establishment of our engagement team. I think, you know, you couldn't have had a better cheerleader than some of us on this day is about making sure that a program that was successful in the 90s resurfaced because it was imperative that we, especially at that time, had a positive relationship with our police officers. And we do. And I think it's intentional that we do, and it's something that you all, as leadership and under Chief Victorian, have been dedicated to seeing that through. There are not nearly enough hours in the day, and of course, not officers on the street, but everything that has the opportunity to happen that's forward-facing that puts the community and PD together in a room is a good thing. I will, my husband has still, to this day, talks about the Citizens Academy, and, you know, the things that he learned in the Citizens Academy and how impactful it was and what he does, and he's an educator, right? But I think that how we continue this momentum in that, how we utilize the resources that our behavioral health team are coming with and using, you know, mental health professionals in some of this work that is in tandem with policing, and so you're not having PD go to a call that could have some sort of other mental health interceptor, and that frees you all to continue to do this work. There's so many things that go with, as you mentioned, your forensic breakdown of a crime. I mean, there have been improvements in, I think, ballistics and how you all put bullets to guns and all the data systems and all the things, and I think that's good. And I know that we are a council that's listening to how, what your needs are in advancing, because I mean, from the whole point of, I've got to watch however many hours of social media feed, because that plays into it too, of how we break down this crime and the analysis of that. So, you know, we want to continue to hear innovative methods of, and resources for how we can be assistance, and it may not even be money, it may just be people. You know, how do we cross-engage you all with different organizations that can continue to build and advance as we do? The other thing is, you mentioned TAG. TAG is great. I think that we work with, and I mean, all of the organizations that are participating in that, from the federal, from the county, and you all, it makes it clear that we know and understand where we are in the state of Texas and the amount of traffic that goes in and out of I-35 through Waco, Texas. And so those kinds of relationships must be maintained. You know, it blew my mind, and I was like, we have that many federal offices here? Yes, we do. And they're important. And so that you all have a positive collaborative relationship with them is a sign of your leadership and what you do. I am curious, how many members, I didn't realize that UNIDOS was that new. I mean, I did, but I don't know that I thought about it. I don't know how many members are in it?
I'm not certain exactly how many members. We have opened it up. It's not just warrant staff, it's also our professional civilians as well. So, and we support them going out in the community. It's incredible the number of events they are already being invited to participate. I know that there's been, you know, a focus on communication about SB4 in the past year, and we were the only agency in the room, and we were invited to take part, and that's because of the relationships and the trust that our officers and professional civilian staff that serve at UNIDOS activity has built. staff that serve at UNIDOS activity has built in our community. So we're particularly proud of that among everything else that we have going on, but that is very unique to Waco, and we are very happy to report that to you.
That's great to hear.
But we can find out the exact.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's just a little note that'll say, hey, Andreas, this minute. The other thing that, did I, at one point, there was a lean into a program that was more of a violence interrupter program? Did I make that up?
No, you did not.
Okay.
You did not. So we had a partner, a community participant in the federal grant that was focused on violence interruption, and we had a fantastic plan that we planned to utilize here in the city of Waco. It was a partnership between us and this nonprofit organization, so it would have been solely for Waco. But unfortunately, there were some concerns with the partnership, with the organization that we were partnered with, and they had to return that money to the Bureau of Justice. We've had other partners, other entities that we work with regularly reapply for that grant, and on your, on the third application, we're currently waiting to see the status of that application process. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that as well.
So that, I mean, that gives us a little ammunition when we, you know, those of us who engage with our federal partners, that we can point to and say, hey, have you made decisions about reconsidering Waco for Department of Justice money? I mean, because that's what, that's what we do. And so it's good to know that that's where we are, because I think that'll be incredibly beneficial for our community. I've seen it work in other cities, and I know that we have, I think, the type of staff, the type of officers that, and the type of community partners that I think would wrap their arms around this particular program and make it work. But I do want to thank you all for the work that you do. I thank you for your presence in this community. I think it is growing every day. You know that in the, the way we have resourced recently, I can only speak for the past seven years, that we've resourced PD, you know that we believe in what you're doing and how you're doing it, and we try to make sure that the things that we can do from a fiduciary perspective are done well and done for you, because we advance and grow. But you all continue to grow your own and lead by example, and so we're happy for that.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bearfield. One thing that you said that really touched me, and this is really a challenge when we talk about a report such as this, because I'm here providing data, but you touched on the fact that every one of those homicides have a name, every one of those aggravated assaults have a victim, and that's really hard for us to do and convey. I also want to say that there are so many family members of homicide victims that our homicide investigators stay in touch with well beyond their profession, even after they retire, because they do build that relationship through the investigation and subsequent activities. And then additionally, many of those family members are also out there in the community with us through our engagement and outreach, helping to address violence in our community. So our relationship may have started with this violent act, but we have so many other relationships, so much strength in that relationship that's been built upon that to help serve our community as well. And the fact that you here we are talking about data and numbers, but the fact that there are names involved and people that are victims is important to point out, and it's also important to point out the work that they're doing in our community, too.
Anyone else, guys? Um, I'll, let me see. Okay. Thanks, Assistant Chief Wallace, and I see Chief Victorian is also here. Great job. These are great numbers. I commend Waco PD on this report. Violent crime down 4%. I think it makes perfect sense to be combining aggravated assault and homicide to develop a violent crime statistic, and if you look year-over-year, that's down 4%. If you go back two years, it's actually down 34% from two years ago. So I mean, that progress is amazing. Nonviolent crime, I know that wasn't the focus of today's meeting, but also down 3% year-to-date, year-over-year. So overall, crime is down 3% year-to-date, year-over-year. And some of the things that Councilmember Bearfield talked about, just I'll echo, just the relational policing that has become a focus and a priority here is so important. The outreach that we're seeing, not just in the neighborhood association meetings, but in the Junior Police Academy, the COE, and I can vouch for, when I was campaigning for mayor, I went to 20 different neighborhood associations in a couple of months. Waco PD was at every one of them. Waco PD was highly respected in those meetings and was seen as a friend to the neighborhood, which I think that dynamic was so fun and productive to watch and to witness. So I love the renewed effort in community outreach and just increased visibility, patrol, and I like what you said about intervention, too, to try to prevent, what we talked about a little bit, to try to prevent that violent crime or nonviolent from becoming violent. So again, thanks for all you do. The city's made a strong police department a priority through our investment in Waco PD, and we're seeing a great return on that investment. So I appreciate all the work of you, Chief Victorian, and congratulations on your promotion, Chief Wallace, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, Mr. [inaudible].
I think that is all for item number 517. We have no, item 518, Planning Public Hearing Agenda Item, City Manager Ford.
Plan, again, can you do this in like five minutes? Three minutes. Jennifer says three minutes. So Clint Peters, Development Extraordinaire, going to present an update on one public hearing that on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Bradley Mayor. City Council, we do just have the one public hearing. This was a continued case from our June 4th meeting. There were some ownership issues that had to be worked through. Those have been resolved and meet the ordinance requirements for ownership. This is a rezoning from R-1B to a residential PUD at 3212 South Fourth Street. This is down in our Oakwood Neighborhood Association in South Waco, South Garden Drive, in an area that's been transitioning over the past couple of decades. The student housing, this is a proposed student housing development on one acre. It's urban residential land use and currently single-family zoning. You can see all the blue on the map are PUDs, similar PUDs that have developed in the area for student housing that are at a similar density. That's what allowed the single-family zoning, and that's the case for this. So the plan would be to rezone this to PUD. It's proposed for six single-family homes, four bedrooms each, which is similar density to what's currently allowed in the single-family zoning district. The PUD does allow them to develop it as a multifamily site, so the six homes all on one site, and you can see it's geared more towards student housing because it has the parking for student housing. So each four-bedroom unit has a parking space per bedroom plus an extra parking space for guests, so there's five spaces per unit. And then you can see what these look like. They do meet our architectural design standards. They all have front porches and sloped roofs and architectural design features. We did not receive any negative feedback from the notices, and Plan Commission did recommend approval eight to zero for the PUD with our standard conditions for site development when it comes through permitting. And that's all we have.
Clint, it's just always nice to hear from you during the work session.
Yeah.
To be honest.
Great. Are there any other items, City Manager Ford? I think that's it. We will now, I now ask Council about number 519, Request for Scheduling of Future Agenda Items. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
Yeah, I've got one, and it doesn't have to be necessarily any time specific to this next agenda, but I would love to get an item on the agenda to further discuss and flush out the Neighborhood Streets Program, what would that look like as we are nearing a point where we can begin putting funds towards it. I would hate to skirt the lines here and cause our city attorney to have to jump down my throat. If I got into the nitty-gritty of a streets program when we're talking about budget, I want to make sure that we're posting it correctly and discussing it. So if we had, if we were able to get an item on a future agenda to really go deep on what it looks like, best practices from other cities, and how we can implement that here, I'd really appreciate that.
Great. Thanks for my approach, him. Any other requests for future agenda items? We will now recessed executive session, recessed the work session, and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:25 PM.
We're going to executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney Briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Melanie Elaine Calusa versus City of Waco, McClintock County, Public Health District. Civil Action Number 624-CV-00161 pending in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas, Waco Division. Real estate, or real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.